On Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well. Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeter-
7:00 PM in the No Act Room, and I'll start off by introductions. I'm Langdon Plummer, I'm Chair of the Board, and Vice Chair-
Aaron Brown.
John Gruder.
Nancy Belancher, Select Forward Rep-
Thank you, and?
Jennifer Martal.
And Gwen English.
Thank you. We have a good agenda coming up this evening. We have first of minutes of January 12th to approve, and I was not here, Aaron was not here, but-
We actually didn't approve the December 22nd minutes.
Oh, we didn't do that either.
Wanted enough of us here, we figured we'd wait for you guys to get out of the January 12th one that you got.
Well, I don't think we have, I don't have those December minutes with me.
Wasn't in the packet. I can pull it up if you want. Everybody, does one have it?
I do, I have, I grabbed an old envelope, I do have it, and-
Okay.
I don't think I had-
Maybe I do have one, because I bought the meeting packet from last time, so I'll stand corrected, and open the floor to the minutes of-
Are we on December 22nd?
22nd.
22nd, yeah.
I do.
2020, that was last year.
It is, yeah.
No, 2022.
2022.
Okay, so just bear with me a moment.
Isn't the 20, no, it isn't, alright.
Well, I'll make, just to start it, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December 22nd, 2022.
Okay. I have an amendment, though.
Is there a second?
They have a second, first.
A second for discussion?
Okay, second for discussion, sure.
Okay.
And approve. He didn't-
A motion to approve.
Right, but I have-
We had to discuss it first.
Thank you.
Come on!
Come on, well, you always have a discussion after a motion, anyway. Go right ahead.
Okay.
The floor is yours, Nancy.
Okay.
Just to approve what we discussed, yeah, I follow you.
If I can get these quieted out.
Okay, so on page two, line 49, it says Maddie, I can't pronounce her last name, sorry Maddie, my apologies, of RPC, Rocking and Planning Commission, says posted, but she showed us. So, there's a lot of acronyms throughout this document, so I'd like to suggest that we actually spell things out for people, instead of just the acronyms. And then, the other change I have is on line 72, same page, it says Section 9.4.9 concerns a criteria to be used by the BOA, I think that's supposed to be ZVA, Zoning Board of
I might make a suggestion, instead of spelling out every acronym, because that could get tedious to type and to read, is that, you know, the first time, like, it would be Regional Planning Commission, in parentheses, RPC, and then you'd say RPC-
That's the standard, yeah.
Yeah, that's a better way to do it.
Sorry, I guess I wasn't that articulate, but yeah. That's the standard in any document to do that. But it would help the public, if they're looking back at something, to know what was So, I think that was it, all of mine were spelling out acronyms.
I think that's a really good point, for both you and Jen, so maybe in these minutes, we start by doing what we want to see it come back as the next time, as an edit?
Okay, I can do that, I've written them down, do you want me to go through it?
Yeah, just do, you know, do just like you guys just described, change it full out the first time, parentheses what it'll be in the rest of the document the next time.
Okay.
So when he's doing the updated minutes, he'll see what we want.
Absolutely, I have it, or most of them, I think, so, so back to page two of 10, line 49, I'm sorry, line 50, MPOC, is Master Plan Oversight Committee.
Right.
Okay, and then-
MPOC.
Yes, thank you. And then, I did the Board of Adjustments, bear with me, please. Now I'm on page three of 10, and I wrote, oh, TRC is on, sorry, line 93, TRC, Technical Review Committee. UEI on page, on line 94, I didn't write what that is.
Underwood Engineers, Inc.
Thank you. I was trying to get Dave to help me with this before the meeting started, and then I didn't get back, so, oh, on line 121 on page three, I think there's a weird sentence hanging out there, I apologize, I missed that before, the last sentence says, "He noted a significant reduction from the number of units if there is open space." So I was going to suggest that we just put a period at "units" and take out "if there is open space."
What line is that again, I'm sorry?
Line 121, on each three of 10, it's the very last sentence. Am I okay to go on?
There, do you want to change it too?
I was just, I was going to suggest that we put a period after the word "units." I didn't go back to read it, so I don't know, that's why I wanted to throw it out there for other input.
Or is it, if there is open space, I don't know.
What line are you on again?
121.
Let's be back up to-
Maybe we should just not have that there at all, if we're not sure.
Yeah.
So, take out that whole sentence, or put a period at the end of "units"?
Maybe, because I'm not sure what-
Okay, if everyone thinks we should just-
It's a bit of an accent, I mean, if there's an open space, yeah, probably the whole sentence isn't necessary.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, page four of 10, line 161, "The applicant presented the LLA plan."
Flaw line adjustment?
Thank you.
Who said it?
"The applicant presented."
Okay, I would say flaw line adjustment.
Thank you. And then, I'm almost there, almost, almost. Page six of 10, line 235, ROW, Right of Way. Page seven of 10, line 263, HDC, Stock District Committee, Commission, excuse me, Julie yells at me when I do that. Page nine of 10, 380, PTAPP, Pollution, uh, pollutant tracking and accounting project database, correct?
Sounds right.
Okay. But when Dave reads those, he knows it just says PTAP, so I don't know if we need to, like, I feel like now we're getting into, like, we don't want to see, like, you know, EWG is like a-
We're trying to communicate better, I want-
I know.
The public, when they're reading the meeting minutes, if they're trying to figure something out, they know what they're-
Okay.
That was my whole-
I think you're right.
Purpose of it, is, we might know what they are, but-
No, it's a good, a good habit.
And that's-
Austerity.
I'm sure everyone will clap, that was it for me.
Good.
And then, can I just go back to, you said BOA, and there's a couple of BOAs out there, you know what context or who said it?
I don't know.
Because if they said BOA, if they said BOA-
Then you go the other way.
Because we're saying, oh, no, zoning board, I don't know, I don't know the context.
But if they say BOA, then we can put in parentheses what that means, that's what they do when they quote-
Yeah, I just want to find out.
I better re-read the line, because this is, you and I talked about this, and-
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Okay, so line 72 on page two of 10, "Section 9.4.9 concerns a criteria to be used by the BOA for variance or appeal under these sections."
That is the ZVA, then, yeah, okay. I just want to make sure, because there's also the BOA, the Building Officials Association.
Yes, yes, well, I didn't know that.
I didn't know why that would come up, but I just want to make sure.
It's better to clarify it.
It's the Columbo thing, now they both do it.
Right.
What?
I said, that's the Columbo thing you're doing right now.
I'm all done, I'm all done, oh wait.
One more, I did it.
Thank you, David.
I'm flunked.
David's favorite.
I just did it. I just want to make sure.
I'm really done.
Any other notes or corrections?
Page two, the paragraph, line 43 to 47, it's just all, it's almost like the whole thing needs to be rewritten.
Line 40.
Just a little confusing, I think I know what he was saying, but, "Commission used a public input software for those that yielded approximately 1,000 responses."
Which, I'm sorry, which page are you on?
Page two, the paragraph from line 43 to 47, though.
I think the first two sentences aren't bad.
They're not as bad, but it's-
The last one's a little weird.
Yeah, but if you go, he's talking about parking and bike and pedestrian, it should be parking, comma, bike and pedestrian, those are the things I think that will put into the, the public software yielded 1,000 responses into something to do with that.
That's right.
So it's-
How about if-
Well, we figured it out, so I guess it's all right.
How about if we took out, how about if it reads, "The commission used a public input software delete for those-"
I did.
"-that yielded approximately 1,000 responses, and they are considering using that for the rezoning effort to get public," so delete for those and delete with both.
Okay.
Yeah, that works.
Would that work? Would that make a lot more sense? Yeah.
Yeah, and get rid of that "and" on 45, between parking and bike, just read that.
Maybe make it a comma.
Mm-hmm.
Do we ever get a second? You seconded it, so you could start.
I thought you had it.
Yeah, no, we did, we did, sorry.
Okay.
I just noticed one little typo, I'm looking at this, on line 68, "Miss Dioria referenced the four-foot seal level rise, should be sea lower rise."
Oh, seal, wrong kind of, kind of-
That's like a seal in your gasket, not a seal that makes noise.
I was thinking like a, like an aquatic seal.
Yeah. The mammal.
The mammal.
Okay. So motions to accept, well-
As amended.
As amended, you willing to modify that motion?
I will make the motion to, to approve the minutes of December 12th, 2022, as amended.
December 22nd.
December, what did I say?
12th.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now we'll move to-
January-
January 12th of 2023.
I have one, Mr. Chair.
So go ahead, Nancy.
Page two of five, line 84, "Master plan document done in," it says 2017-1, I think it's supposed to be 2018.
Plus one. But he could have said, he could have said 2017-18, because that's, we did, you know, we adopted it early in 2018, I think it was February 2018, so we worked on it 2017, I don't remember what he said, but-
Oh, it's 2018.
2018's fine, just to change it to.
Dan is not listed in Board Members Present, but he, he made a, he seconded the motion, so I'm assuming he was-
He was present, and he was activated.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
I have one on the last page, Nancy, well, line 173, "She noted an oversight mechanism needs to be in place with housing incentives."
Sorry, what line, Gwen?
I think it should clarify that, that we're talking about workforce housing, somehow-
Are you on 172, 173?
174, 175, 173, 74, 75.
Okay, what did I say? Miss Melange noted, "An oversight mechanism needs to be in place with housing incentives." It would be workforce housing incentives.
Change the motion.
Yeah, it would, I didn't even catch that, yeah.
And it's to try to enforce the-
To make sure that the qualifications and stuff are met every year.
Yes, so somehow that needs to be reworked a little.
Needs to be in place with workforce housing incentives, so that Mr. Shapples, oh yeah, wait a minute. That doesn't make sense either, okay, so, sorry, Gwen, do you want me, I'm taking over your-
No, no, no.
Okay, sorry.
I know what you were trying to say.
Okay, Miss Melange noted, "An oversight mechanism needs to be in place with workforce housing," so workforce housing has to, workforce has to be included, "incentives so that," comma, "as Mr. Shapples pointed out, comma, they are not sold and then rented at market rate."
Yeah, that works better.
Sorry to do that, I didn't mean to.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't your fault, I think it just didn't translate to the minutes quite accurately. And then, just before that, HAC, should that be HO, Housing Oversight Committee, is that what that stands for?
Housing Advisory-
Advisory, my bad, hmm, but we should spell it out.
So we would need to correct line 72 on page four, five, two, on page five of five, excuse me, two, "She noted Housing Advisory Committee will have the documents."
Princess HAC.
Advisory Committee.
But Princess HAC, right after that?
Yes, that's how you want to do it, yeah. Spelt out the first time with parentheses and the acronym after, and then therefore just the acronym, or, I mean, he can spell it out again if he thinks he needs to, if it's way down in the discussion or something, but-
Yeah, five pages later.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
I think that's a really good change to the minutes, that'll make it better for everybody, not just the general public.
Looking for a motion, from somebody that was here.
I move to accept the meeting minutes of January 12th, 2023, as amended.
Second.
Okay, so, let's do a voice vote, because some of us were not here. So those in favor, I said voice voted, and I was thinking hand vote.
Can't we vote even if we weren't here?
You can.
You can, technically.
Yeah.
I mean, if people watched the meeting, and-
Yeah, I'm sure they did.
Sure.
Twice.
So those, those, those that were here, because those that weren't are not attendance anyway in the minutes, so those that were here for this meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are we voting to approve?
To approve.
Okay. Aye.
Gwen?
I guess I abstain, I wasn't here. I thought I, okay.
You can vote, though.
I'm confused.
You can vote.
Oh, okay.
Okay, aye.
All right.
I'll say aye also, even though I wasn't here.
All right, I'll abstain, so-
But I did have a question.
Motion carries, yes.
Not on the minutes.
No.
But if you don't mind-
I don't mind, make it quick.
This is a little bit of a work session.
Oh, it is, okay.
It is, but, so, it's a quick one, so, one of the things we've been challenged with, Dave, is the, the thing that came up towards the end of the meeting, about monitoring workforce housing and making sure it stays that way, and it seems, I mean, have you gotten your hands around that, to, in the real world, make sure that happens, and you still see it as-
No, I, I think, I mean, I think there's always going to be things that, you know, you can't, you don't catch, pretty much everything. I don't see it, I think sales are pretty secure, renting-
A different story.
Sales might be an issue, but I, I don't know how much of a problem that is, and I don't even know how we would find out if, if an affordable unit that's supposed to be, is sold, is being rented at market rate, say that happens, I don't even know how we would do it. But I guess of the big picture, is sales are pretty good, because no one's going to, they can't sell, because it's right in the deed, as long as it stays in the deed, doesn't fall out, any good, you know, title, you know, attorney or title company that reviews it, needs this, it's called a transfer certificate, and we get them, every, every, pretty much everyone that's transferred, I think everyone that's transferred on the, on the units we have since 2005, when they were constructed, has gotten a transfer certificate, so there's not been any, like, you know, oops, I sold it at market rate.
Right.
So that hasn't been an issue. Renting is, we don't, we don't have one in Exeter yet, so that is kind of up in the air, and the RPC's looking at it, and I'm sure Housing's been aware of it, or, you know, Housing Advisory Committee's aware of it.
Yeah, we've talked about it before here, too, I see it as a challenge, but I do think, I do think you have to have an oversight element built in-
Absolutely.
-that you can report, have, put the onus on the developer, for lack of a better term, and going forward on whoever takes that over, maybe it's a, you know, like a property management company or whatever, or the citizens, the people that own the property, but I think to just accept it on good faith is pretty naive by our community.
Absolutely, I don't think we would do that.
Really, it's a state issue, right?
Well, no-
Most of the state, probably the state.
Well, I mean, if someone comes into Exeter for affordable housing, you know, or rentals, then how do we, how do we track that?
I know, but I'm saying that the town itself is probably too big a task for them, but maybe some regional, countywide, statewide, individual, that's what they do.
Absolutely, that's what we're looking into, but there's nobody that exists that-
Well, no, and I did say, I mean, but that is a position needed to be created, maybe.
Potentially, in the, in the short term, we're thinking if anything comes like that, there's an annual reporting requirement on behalf of the property owner, and then our administration here, who it goes to, and they have to check it, just like the stormwater reports, you know?
Right.
They come in, they have to come in, and someone has to check it, verify it, you know, have, have some compliance, and, and if we don't get the reports, follow up and get them.
What do you do?
Yeah, follow up and get them.
But that's a big question to me, what do you do? I mean, you have to have some kind of stick involved, like, if you don't do this, there's some kind of penalty for not doing, because you are talking, you know, substantial benefit to these applicants-
Because you are.
-when they throw these units into the mix of a project, they're getting substantial benefit, and it's also a real need.
Yeah.
Right, in our community, to have these units stay affordable, clearly it's a crisis in the entire state, probably the country.
Many times there's federal money involved in the-
So, is money involved there sometimes, I think we get the benefit of that likely, because usually-
Oh, yeah.
So there's money involved there sometimes, I think we get the benefit of that likely, because usually, they have mortgages and stuff, they have to comply. That's, I'm aware of that. That's pretty restrictive.
Yeah.
Yeah, when it's just a town type of stuff, um, to me, it, it's one that could easily slip through the cracks. I mean, and the other one to me, is when we approve these things, I think we also really face that challenge of the time moratorium. Is it in perpetuity, or is it with a 20 years? Because, I don't know, I'm not the oldest guy in the room, but 20 years goes by quicker than I like to think it goes.
We've talked about this too, talking advisor.
Yeah, it sounds great, but then all of a sudden, say we do a great job for the next 10 years with this, and then 20 years from then, they all expire. Right. Right? And now you get all these market things everywhere, and now it's just pushing people out again.
Glenn, did you say 30?
Well, the Ray Farm is 30, right? Or Gateway, Gateway was supposed to be 30. I think Watson Road is that 30? And I don't know about the Squam Scott Building. I'm not sure what.
Yeah, I'll have to look at those. I thought we changed one, we changed them to in perpetuity.
We definitely did at least one day in perpetuity.
Yes.
I remember doing it.
Yes.
Having that, but it was a while ago.
I think that was the Rose, the Rose Farm property. I thought...
It might have been.
Maybe we did.
It might have been, because I remember...
What was the point of that?
I can't remember the fellow's name that lived over there, was on our board for a short period of time. He's environmentalist.
Oh, yeah.
Peter was involved, I remember talking to Peter.
Yes, yeah.
So I do think Rose Farm was the one.
But it's a, it's a concern.
Yeah, it's a real issue.
We've been talking with...
We've talked to other communities since.
Housing Advisory Committee has had this discussion, talked with, um, Workforce Housing Coalition, the Seacoast Workforce Housing, um, New Hampshire Housing. They tend to come to our meetings. We're all brainstorming to make sure that as we're looking for options for workforce housing, we're making sure that everyone's aware we need oversight.
Right.
On it, and how can we get it, and how can it be not at, say, Exeter's cost?
Right, right.
But, what are the ways?
It's also not just an Exeter issue, right?
Right.
Like, I'm saying.
And I, yeah. Did it come up at the Rocky and Planning Commission meeting? I can't remember.
I don't think it did.
But it likely will future months, yeah. So anyway, it's, it's definitely an issue that...
Well, I know, like, states, we don't have it, I don't think in New Hampshire. I don't, I'm not aware of any actual rent control in New Hampshire.
No.
But I know Massachusetts does have that in certain cities, certainly, and I'm wondering how they do it. There's gotta be a, I mean, it's not rocket science, but it's, the devil's in the detail, right, to do it? Yeah, there's a bill.
There is a bill.
I'll be shooting that one down, by the way. Unless you're gonna lock in my utility costs.
Yeah, I can't, can't freeze rents. It's not a reality.
Yeah, they're trying to freeze rents now.
No, I know, I was just trying to think of what one had to do with the house, but it's okay.
I'm a landlord, and my costs go up every month.
I didn't know that.
And my rents have to go up to at least stay with inflation, or else.
Thank you. No.
Getting chewed on.
Okay. Did not know that. Anyway, yes, back to the other part, yes, we are hoping or looking at options for oversight, for workforce housing.
What consideration do I get if I'm gonna build 40 units, I could make 10 of them workforce housing?
More units.
More units.
What, what do you mean? What consideration where?
As a developer.
Yeah. Why would they do it?
If I was a developer, why would I?
First, it has to be allowed.
Well, right, but, so I want to get permission to do that.
Okay.
John's question is, why would I do it?
Why would I do it? What am I getting in return?
Well, that's the whole point of the MUND. The MUND we adopted last year allows, and we have, there's a project that is, the first project is going to the zoning board of adjustment, I think in February.
Are we still calling it the zoning board of adjustments? They haven't changed the name yet?
Well, they haven't changed their name, than I'm aware of.
I thought it was the REZO.
So that's going forward, but that would, um, anyway, they're going under that, because what, what the benefit is, is like, okay, say current, there's a current zoning in the C1, and you get like 35, uh, you know, it's a unit every 3,500 square feet. So say a parcel can get, you know, you do the math, and it's 12 units. Well, the MUND says, okay, you can, you can do that, or you can go through this optional mixed-use development, and density is not capped. There is no density cap. We, and we reduce the parking for one stall per unit, instead of two, you know, two or two, you know, how it's set up. We, we reduce the thing, uh, reduce, oh, reduce the parking, get rid of the height, but 10% have to be affordable. So say you could build 12, market rate, and then, hmm, I could use the MUND and I could build 20, but two of them have to be affordable, but I can build 18, instead of 12. So it, once the numbers work, that's the incentive you're getting, you're getting the increased density, more market rate units to offset the affordability.
And the point I'm getting, that I'm trying to get clarified in my own head, so all my benefit is upfront.
Yes.
Right, there's no staggered thing that you get some this year, some next year.
Well, no.
There's no way to put something in place to do that.
Well, in theory, if you have 18 market rate units, you get a benefit from those for the life of the unit.
Nobody's saying something you might be able to take away.
Yeah, so if you, if you don't, then whether it's a, you know, somehow they get penalized on their tax bill, or something to...
For not complying.
For not honoring that.
Oh, not comply.
Not...
Yeah.
Keeping those two units affordable. You know, we, we can't keep track of them, because there's too many, and you guys are all too busy, understandable, so...
You have to have someone keeping track of them. It doesn't work.
But again, unless you have some teeth in there, what's the point?
So what do we do?
Well, that...
So, like I said, if there are incentives that could be, on over 10 years, and after that, well, whatever happens, happens, I guess.
It's a little easier under rentals, because a rental is, is one property owner.
Right.
There's one.
But even then, Dave, what do you do?
You revoke their site plan.
What does that entail?
Of course.
That is, sending, sending them a letter to revoke the site plan, and you can, you, you come have a hearing here, and then they're not in compliance with the, with the planning board's approval, because it will be part of the planning board's approval if you do that. Uh, then you can revoke their approval.
Okay.
And then, uh, the building inspector's supposed to revoke the COs.
Okay.
So they got an, I'd say that's quite a bit of teeth. I mean, I've nev, I've only used that once.
I was gonna say, okay.
I've, I've only used that once, but we never even got to that point. I mean, the person.
What was the impetus?
It was, I, I don't, it was, that was a while ago, and I used it just as the threat of doing it.
Yeah.
Sent the letters, and then, whoo, problem solved. So it's quite, it's quite a stick, and if you have, you have violations of zoning ordinances, um, under whatever it is, 676, I forget what the site is, but, but you could take them to, uh, Superior Court.
Yeah.
And you're in violation for X amount of day, you know, like, up to, it's a figure, like, you know, a couple hundred for his first offense, and then 500 for every subsequent offense, but you can treat every day as a subsequent offense.
Yeah.
So once you put them on notice, you, you put them on notice, you give them a letter saying, hey, you need to comply with this, you have 45 days to comply.
Right.
If they fail to comply, then you are free to go ahead and revoke their site plan, and then take them to, every day they stay, you know, like, they don't clear out the property or don't come into compliance, you can start fining them 250 or 5, 275 or 500 a day. Okay, so it adds up pretty quick.
Would we revoke the site plan, if that, if that happened? I mean, could you revoke just the, the two units?
I don't know. Why would you want to just do that?
I, I don't know, I'm trying to think, I'm trying to think of a way to, like...
You want to just get compliance.
I want to get compliance, but I want maybe a yearly something, you know, penalty if they, if it doesn't happen. I guess revoke the whole thing. It's probably too complicated.
Well, the court system's complicated, too. I mean, I've done several of those on different, like, property code, property maintenance violations, and took them and got the fines. I mean, it is a lengthy process, but it's, it's the process.
Okay, you didn't do, you didn't do two, you didn't keep those two workforce houses, you gotta give us four now. And have next year we catch you again, it goes to six, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, again, it's...
But that would have to be written upfront.
Oh, yeah, obviously, yeah.
No, that, that's something that makes a lot of sense, though. At, I think John's making a great point of the timing of establishing compliance and non-compliance results. You comply, everybody's happy, right? But if you don't comply, this is what's gonna happen, and then that's part of, if we can, integrate that into the planning board's vote, so it's all part of that. So it really just says, hey, you know, this was laid out for you right up front, that you're getting this benefit, you went this way, these are the conditions of compliance, and put the onus on the applicant to comply, so it sort of takes the monkey off of, makes oversight easier, I guess.
No, no, that's good, yeah. It would have to be some, so we'd formulate some sort of agreement that they sign.
Yeah, right.
Saying that this is what they do, and then, you know, failure to submit the annual report is a $1,000 fine, or whatever.
Something like that.
You know, or something.
Failure to give us the name and phone number of the, of the people in those units, so we can call them and verify it.
That's another thing, we, like, they give us this information.
No, it's very true.
Then how do you really verify?
Right.
With privacy and, and so forth, so...
Absolutely.
But the, the beneficiary of that, he gets more units, but some people get a, a less expensive place to rent.
Correct.
Part of your lease, the leases, you're gonna have a phone call from the town of Exeter, just to verify a few things, not every year, maybe every year, but once in a while.
And maybe they provide the lease.
I'll provide it.
Right.
We ask them to provide a copy of the signed lease.
Yeah.
The executed lease.
I know, like, with, um, as, as a landlord, uh, if you accept subsidized housing of any portion with a tenant, a lot of the programs will make you do certain things as a landlord, to make sure there's a certain standard of housing that's established for the tenant.
Yeah.
Which, for me, has never been an issue, unfortunately, my clients are good, too, but, um, you know, there's things they come and they want to inspect the unit, they actually send somebody else to do that, uh, and they do that every time the lease comes up, they actually come in, like, they physically come in and look at the property, look around outside, make sure it's, you know, it's basic stuff. You know, stuff that would get you an occupancy permit or not.
No junk cars.
Yeah, you know, stuff like not feeling pain, uh, anti-sclav, showerhead, silly stuff, you know, but it's taken care of. So, I mean, to do a, some kind of a compliance, because I think it would be really helpful. I don't know.
All right.
Probably something you have to spend some time.
Well, we got, yeah, that, got my wheels turning here. I mean, we probably wanna, once we get a, a application in front of us that has that, because we don't have any right now.
Right.
We, we don't have any, so we have definitely a great time to have this conversation.
Yeah.
Before you have.
Well, we're also trying to meet the need, if that's something we're trying to do.
Probably bring in legal counsel to say, okay, let's prepare some sort of, uh, site plan agreement.
Right.
You know, affordable housing agreement, or workforce, whatever you want to call it, you know, housing choice agreement, and that stipulates all these things, and what their obligation is, and what the consequences are, and then they sign that and execute that as part of the deal.
Right.
It's like, and then it has some teeth that, you know, we can, yeah, we get the signed lease, we get, you know, we get a copy of the signed lease each year, you know, or whatever. Uh, but then the legal would look at it, so just make sure the agreement doesn't violate any...
Current law.
Yeah.
Right, so that's something, maybe to draft something up?
That's what I mean.
Yeah, and then send it out.
I would have our...
So we have it ready.
Draft something up.
Yeah.
During, once we got, we'd, we'd go through the process, the wait, wait for an application.
Yeah.
And then go through, go through the process, maybe have them talk with the applicant about it, and then have them submit something, like, so we can take it and review it, and, you know, instead of create.
Yeah, sometimes tweaking someone else's arc is good.
Well, then, then the onus isn't on us to pay for legal to create this, whatever, page.
Right.
Agreement. We'll ask them for it, um, and then we can take it and review it with legal and recommend changes and edits, and...
Yeah.
So, I, I, I agree. We, we've been talking about this, there's not, in other towns and cities, we, we've been talking about it, these projects just, kind of just starting and being proposed, and there's not a lot of these out there.
I think a lot of them, in, in my experience in the past, I have a, uh, family used to, we used to, we helped them a lot in Hampton, that did a HUD project across on Winnicott Road, you probably know where it is, the Ross family, across from the town hall. Those condos, they're all behind in the big yellow building out front. So everything out back, which I think was like 60-something units, uh, the first generation in that family built with HUD money, quote unquote. So when you buy with HUD money, there's money available to do, uh, some kind of rent control or subsidized type of housing for rent. So you're doing a rental project, but you're not gonna put it in market, and so this has been around a long time, but a lot of times, it wasn't, uh, over, the oversight wasn't at the town level, it was at the funding company's level, which generally would be the federal government.
Yeah.
Maybe the state as well, but generally the federal government. So if you were willing to take the federal government money, which was also, by the way, usually dramatically discounted in terms of the interest rate you were paying.
Yeah.
If any interest rate. So it's trying to encourage property owners and developers to do these projects, and the benefit to them would be like, instead of paying 8% mortgage, you're paying a 2% or a 0% mortgage, but you're not getting as much income, so the, so the federal government kind of subsidizes it that way. But the actual end user, the occupant, gets a really reasonable rental rate. And that product there, for example, that expired, I think it was 30 years old. They had to do that for 30 years, and they had to go through crazy, uh, compliance stuff, because one of the family members was...
We had those in Exeter.
Yeah.
We have several of those.
Yeah, so that's, you know, but they do expire, too. Like, there is an expiration I know of with that.
Yeah, whatever in the, whatever in the agreement.
Yeah.
We don't usually are privy to those.
It's usually 20 to 30 years with the financing part, so anyway.
Our next meeting. Right, that's the Housing, the Housing Authority, right?
Well, Housing Authority probably gets federal funds, but anything low-income tax credit projects is a few, you know, there's a couple of those in town. There's, there's a few around that get federal money and federal compliance.
Find those options.
But we're just trying to do that at the local level, so we need that same enforcement compliance mechanism.
Right.
That the state and the feds.
Right.
Right.
Right, because you're trying to do it on a, on a use basis versus a financing basis.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? It's a different thing, really. It's two levels for the applicant. Thank you, that wasn't a quick discussion.
Are you happy now?
I think it was, sort of tails into what we're talking.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely. All right. So our next item on the business on the agenda is a public hearing on the proposed zoning amendments for 2023 Town Meeting Warrant. Copies of the full text and proposed amendments are available in the Town Planning Office and posted on the Town Website. Dave, have you got some, update us on that?
There's no, there's no public here for the public hearing.
Okay, sorry about that.
So, that's fine. We got, uh, we did have someone last, last, uh, meeting.
Good.
But we, we've been discussing a couple of proposed zoning amendments. One was the floodplain development, amend the floodplain development ordinance, and the other one was a larger effort, uh, to look at zoning districts, townwide zoning. Basically, you know, looked at a, a, an amendment that would reduce the number of zoning districts, encourage development where infrastructure exists to support it, allow flexibility to property owners to utilize their property consistent with the existing use, while maintaining minimum standards to protect surrounding properties, and to incentivize the creation of diverse housing options. It also aimed to reduce some ambiguity, you know, ambiguities in the ordinance by revising words and adding a lot more definitions, so all lang, terms are defined. But at the January, I'll jump into this one first, if...
Okay.
Chairman, I mean, at the January 12th meeting, because everyone else was here except the chair and vice chair, I believe, at the, at the last meeting. So at, at that meeting, I did explain to the board that I felt this amendment was not ready yet to move forward to the upcoming March warrant. Uh, the board's consensus was to hold off and work through reviewing the proposed changes on a monthly basis to continue to refine and understand the amendment. And I did promise an outline, and I have handed that out, I did send it electronically via email, too, and I wasn't really gonna jump, you know, to start this outline today, but I wanted to at least go over it and see if anyone had any questions. And usually, I, when I first started thinking about it, when I first, uh, I think it was Jen mentioned, a couple of board members mentioned about, you know, doing something like that, great idea. So I thought I would walk through with the board how I review, uh, this, you know, any proposed zoning amendments, so we could do it together collectively. But then I realized, well, maybe there's a little bit more background information that's needed before we get there. So if you look at this outline, and you go down to the second to last bullet, or the, in the page, or, or the seventh, I mean, not seventh bullet, the seventh underlined thing, it says, define the goals of the project. That's where usually I start, um, and go from there, because I kind of, you know, being a planner for, you know, as many years as I have been, I kind of understand what land use decisions are, what, how, how they affect the community, what zoning can do and not do, what site plan subdivision regulations can and can't do, the role of density, height, parking, the role of all the dimensional standards. What, what, when you change those, what happens in the built environment? Like, what, you know, what, what does, you know, 25-foot setback look like in the built environment? So I, and, and then the role of residential and non-residential, you know, you need both uses, well, it's a log maybe, but you usually have a mix of, 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 of both uses, so understand the role of those two. So I kind of thought that would be a good place to start first, kind of go over all those. So I kinda thought that would be a good place to start first, kinda go over all those before we got to the goals of the project. So then when we start looking at the ordinance, I think hopefully everyone will have a better background understanding of what your, you know, if you change height, what does that mean? You know, if you go from, you know, thirty-five feet to fifty feet, what does that mean? And you'll have a good understanding, because with all this, I'll give you all examples, I'll use Exeter neighborhoods, say, okay, this is this density, that's density, this is this height, this building is that height. You know, you might not know it, I mean, there's, you know, quite a few fifty-foot buildings in and around Exeter, you know, even where they're not allowed, but they are. So just kinda show you, you know, all that, show you what density is, show you what setbacks and dimensional standards do. Because like, sometimes it, like, you know, tries to make consistency. Like, you know, tries to, you know, you go through neighborhoods and you see all the houses lined up, like, they're exactly the same. You know, that's, that was like built under modern zoning, it's, you know, boom, 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 boom. Usually, sometimes it's a ranch, 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 or colonial, 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 you know, maybe a little different dorm or some thing, but they're, they're all lined up. And then other neighborhoods you go into and there's no rhyme or reason. Some are pulled up right to the street, some are out back, you know, so it, it's just, and it's like an eclectic mix of, of, of properties, and it's usually probably done before zoning. And some people actually like that, you know, that diversity and that mix. Some people want the, you know, no, 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 I want, I like to have everything. So we'll go through that, we'll, I'll give you examples, we'll, we'll have real-life examples in, in Exeter to go look at. And then I do too, I, I drive around Exeter and just kinda, you know, look at the different neighborhoods and so forth. So I kinda wanted to bring you into that world first, and then move on to, you know, I mean, a lot of this stuff, you know, people have been on this board a long time, a lot of this might be duplicative for folks, but I thought it would be a good place to start. I was, you know, just looking at your thoughts to see, and, and these are questions, like, there's a lot of questions that I would answer to the board. I've come prepared with a presentation on intro to land use as the first meeting. And I would have a little presentation for you, and then we could have a, you know, kinda discussion about it.
Dave, in talking about what you just described, about, for example, changing or allowing higher, higher buildings to be built in an area that presently only allows a thirty-five-foot building, but you, we may be considering changing that to a thirty, to a fifty-foot. Can you, as you're describing what that all means and showing examples, could you maybe talk about where in town that would happen if we accept this?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I wasn't clear that that was what you were gonna do as you were defining the goals, but I think doing it all, doing that all together would be helpful, instead of just saying.
Instead of just talking about height.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But then talk, bring in where we were proposing differences.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm working on that map. It's actually probably, if you're talking area, we're probably going less, less height, the new, the new proposal goes less height in more of Exeter than you allow now, and more height in just small areas. Because right now, we allow fifty feet, I, I've never understood this, in the rural district in the RU. But silos and towers and so forth like that associated with farm uses is exempt, so.
Is there anything that you know of?
No.
That even, I can't think of a, I believe it's fifty feet high.
So that, that is the new zoning ordinance, this whole fifty-foot area that's all around, kinda on the outskirts of town, and all north of one oh one, I, I would say go down to thirty-five.
Fifty feet?
Well, I think explaining that and making that clear is certainly helpful.
So.
Oh, yeah.
Because I wanna know where changes are being defined.
Yeah, and then there's part of height too, what can you do, what can you do to reduce the impact of height? Because you can increase height, but you also can use some tools saying, okay, like, we already have in our zoning ordinance now, like in the industrial district, it's, it's fifty feet, but you, it's sixty feet if you're two hundred feet off a road. So.
Right.
You know, height matters, the closer it is to the road, the more kind of, you know, everyone's been in the city in Boston, look up, and it's kinda like, you know, you're, you're in the bottom of a canyon, yes. I mean, those are buildings.
Portraits, you don't have to go very far.
A hundred stories, I mean, it's all different. Yeah, it's all different now. But you can do some things, like podiums, you can require, okay, from, you know, from the, from the, you know, property line back, you know, fifty feet, it's two-story. So you can build a, like, a podium, and then the back part of the building rises up. So when you're at street level and you're walking in that environment, you don't see the tall building, you just see it, so the scale is much different.
Yeah.
You know, you can use kinda tools to, to make sure things stay in character, or you can use half-stories.
Manhattan's doing that for you.
Four and a half stories, so you're allowing fifty feet, but you're not allowing five stories. And, and it just adds an element to it. But we'll go over, you know, we'll, we'll go over all that. But does that sound?
Yeah, yeah, good.
Okay, so I thought, you know, I, I was gonna put timelines on these, like, month one, you know, month one, but I kinda want this to move organically, so if we wanna spend a lot of time on one, we just do. So I think we have plenty of time, because we have a year, we'll put it as a standing agenda item, and then hopefully we'll spend, you know, kinda, I'd look, like to carve out maybe an hour, shoot for an hour each meeting, to go over, you know, and just, and just keep going. Get a good background of understanding what these standards are, what they mean, how, what the impacts they have, and then dive in and.
Well, Dave, we also spoke about having it on the agenda as land use regulation review on every agenda, so it's, it's like the master plan discussion.
Yeah, and that's what this is. And I think people following along too, if they watch the whole, it's like a series. You're gonna, you're gonna get a good foundation in planning and kinda understand the basics of it. And then when we propose the ordinance, hopefully people that kinda participate or at least, you know, keep tuned in, then hopefully the public hearing and the public input will be that much more, better and more informed.
More educated.
Yeah, more educated, so.
Well, I think it's a great idea, and I wanna thank Dave and those who came up with that thought. It's a nice way to stay, for us to stay on top of what we're talking about when we're talking about it. And I look forward to it. So we're gonna go with that plan.
Do you, can I just make one comment, Mr. Chair?
Excuse me?
Can I make one comment?
Please.
Um, yeah, I'm just thinking, like, I'm, I'm just trying to be pragmatic.
Yes.
And I know as we, as our meetings get busier, if we have like, you know, it's gonna be hard to like dedicate an hour per meeting at the end, you know, meetings like today, it would be no problem, but, you know, if we have a bunch of applications, things can get hectic. And I know we have busy times and that happens, so, I mean, I think that having, I like the idea of it moving organically and we can, but I think having, like, I would kinda like to see just like a timeline or like a schedule of what you're, like, even if we just say, like, the first two are February, the second two are March, the third two are April, and then, you know, maybe May, we talk about goals for both meetings, and then, and then we go section by, because we get a, but, I don't wanna get to the end of the year and we haven't even like started into the document, because we skipped a couple meetings, because it got busy, and then, you know, so, I don't know, I'm, I'm kinda a schedule person, like, the schedule can be flexible, but it's nice to.
Yeah.
It's nice to have it laid out.
I think this will take, I mean, to that end, I did a schedule, but then I got rid of it because of what you just said was, we're gonna get busy.
Yeah.
If we have three or four applications, and I know we're gonna be here from seven to ten-thirty until we're, then, then we're not gonna talk about this.
Right.
So, so I, that's what I thought of, and so this should take us about ten weeks.
I think if you.
Ten meetings.
I think the benefit of having a timeline that we establish will also help you when you're setting our agenda, when you're meeting with potential applicants and saying, well, you know what, this is, these guys are pretty far behind on some of our longer-term work, so maybe we're gonna have to not put you in, squeeze you into this meeting, we're gonna bump you to the next meeting, because I know the planning board really wants to get caught back up on this, because they're three months behind, you know, so I do think having the schedule probably helps you, doesn't, I don't think it restricts us, I think.
No, I mean, it can be flexible, yeah, it doesn't need to.
But I think it helps you with yours, because you establish who gets on the agenda in our meetings, really, right?
No.
It's kind of.
No, I mean, that's dictated by state law, we submit a plan, we have to put it on the agenda within thirty days.
Okay, but when you're, when an applicant comes in and you're setting what you already know we have in front of us, you do have some involved.
Oh, no, when it's, yeah, the only time I have involvement is like when I tell applicants, I'm like, it's the agenda's fault.
Right.
You, you, you're probably gonna go there and pay your team.
Right.
You know, four hours, so go to the next one.
Yeah.
But then in that case, we wouldn't have time for this one anyway.
Okay.
You follow me?
Yeah, I do.
I, I'm not gonna bump people because of this.
No.
Why not?
I just follow the state laws, just get them on the, you know.
So we do this, we do this for the next two or three months and see how it's going. We get out, by the end of the summer, if we're not looking good, we have a special meeting or two.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that.
I was thinking if we need to carve out some time, and we could, we could, I mean, the, you know, a lot, most communities, their planning board meets once a month. So you could always say, if we get the, you know, if we get to a point where like, okay, the second meeting of the month is gonna be dedicated to this for the next three months or something like that. You could do that, because we'd still meet all the statutory deadlines of, you know, applications. You know, so that's, that's an option too. But I, I, I mean, I'll put something together. I think, I think it's about one, one, you know, probably ten meetings for the start of it, and then the review, so. I mean, it might be, you know, thirteen, fourteen meetings, six months, but I'll, I'll put together something.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jen. I'll just have you on your mind. I think we've gotta figure it out.
Second one. Oh, is that, are we good?
That's good.
Okay, floodplain ordinance. So we're, we're moving, you know, we're not, we're just gonna work through that. Thank you for that, thank you for agreeing with my, I think this is exciting, I'm pretty excited about this, so. I'm looking forward to doing this with the board. Second one is much more, much more straightforward. It's just amend Article nine point four floodplain development ordinance by adding language to the ordinance to strengthen the town's resilience to increase flooding events and to reduce impacts associated with rising sea levels. And you do, you were provided a copy of this last time. There were, you two were not here, but we did go through it line by line, every change. I mean, we can do it again if, for the benefit of the two that weren't there, or.
I think I already did it.
You already did it?
The committee.
Yep.
So essentially, it was, it was, you know, we, we added to a purpose statement, which is not regulatory, but, you know, it's, it's always, it's a basis for, for the rules. We changed the base flood elevation from zero or one foot to all construction being two feet above base flood elevation, and we made some other changes. Market value, I know you said that, Aaron, you brought that up about market value and assessed value. And we just kept market value and defined market value as A, an appraiser, or the assessed value at the Exeter Town Assessing Department.
Okay.
So as an owner, you can go, and, and if you don't mind that, you can use that.
Right.
So you don't have to get an appraiser.
Yeah, right.
And then if you wanna go get an appraiser, because you feel that might be low, and that fifty percent threshold, you could get more out of that by getting an appraiser, that's up to you.
Right.
But you can always use a known number here.
That makes sense.
That's how we broke it up. Actually, I told Kristin, because I was like, I think I dealt with that, a community I work for did that, and then we looked at their definition, because I was like, I think they did it well. And so she pulled their definition up and.
Nice.
This is what you see, so. It gives an option to the property owner, kinda gives flexibility to them. And then also, the final thing was advisory area, because the four-foot sea level rise, kind of in the middle of what's projected, not the low end, not the high end, kinda in the middle, by I think, what, twenty-one-hundred, it, it's just advisory, it's not regulatory at all. It's just when people come in, it's a mechanism for us to encourage them, let them know about, you know, the Cape study and the various projections, and encourage, you know, more stringent building standards if they so choose. And it's not a big lift, it's just actually moving the, you know, the bottom of the building up a couple more feet, so it's not, it doesn't add a lot of financial burden to it, but we just wanna advise them of that, and some people, you know, see if people take advantage of it. So with that, I did provide all of the folks I passed out, a draft of the zoning amendment that it would look like, and I just called it one, it might not be one, but whatever it is. Are you in favor of the adoption of Amendment one as proposed by the planning board for the town zoning ordinance to amend nine point four floodplain development ordinance? The intent of this amendment is to prevent new or expansion of existing septic systems within the special flood hazard area. Exceptions are made for cases of system failure or malfunction. Require all new construction be elevated at least two feet above the base flood elevation. Incorporate an advisory sea level rise risk areas into the ordinance to educate landowners and the public about potential future risks to property from sea level rise, and to encourage more stringent building and design standards. And lastly, to include minor text modifications for the purposes of clarification and alignment with the state model ordinance. So that would be the warrant article, if anyone has any, you know, suggestions on that, harem.
Is it, I mean, this probably is a stupid question, but, okay, so is it, is it all new construction be elevated at least two feet above the base flood elevation within the special hazard area? Or is, I mean, if it's gonna be two feet, within two feet of base flood elevation, you're within the special hazard area? Like, do we, should we add that caveat? Require all new construction be elevated at least two feet above base flood elevation within?
I see we're going, well, the, it, the base flood areas, the elevation is only established in the flood.
In the floodplain, so.
I hear what you're saying, like, is, is someone gonna think this is town-wide and?
Well, that's it, because when you read it, people might be like, oh, that sounds harsh, like, I'm not gonna vote for it or something.
Well, I, this isn't, this is just language that we drafted, and then we gotta send it to, uh, gonna send it to the town manager tomorrow. I can just make that clear.
All right.
I mean, you don't have to approve this necessary language.
Oh, okay.
You know, like, but I wanted, I gave it to you because I wanted input, and I'm glad I did, because I get that. Someone could say, oh, you gotta build above the base flood elevation everywhere in Exeter? No, it's only where base flood elevation is established, but people don't know that, right?
Right, which is a very limited area.
Which is a very limited area, but, okay.
But it might just, it might just clarify and make it clear that this is not applied to, it's not gonna constrict people from construction for the most part.
If you're looking for feedback, I, I find it pretty difficult to read, personally.
Which one? The warrant?
The zoning amendment number one. Yeah, the warrant.
Okay.
I, I don't know if there's an easier way to format that, that just kinda says what you're, you're asking them to vote in favor of, and then kinda bullet points what it's doing, because this is one massive run-on sentence that.
I think that's.
You know, and I worked on this thing, and I know what it means.
They're all like that.
They're all like that, has no bullets.
Yeah.
It's the legalese that's required.
I just, well, it's just to me, I mean, you know, when we used to have newspapers, they didn't write it at this level of ability to read and comprehend. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, Dave, but they assume you're smart enough to read.
But the general public.
Newspaper has the.
This is general public, third-grade reading level, isn't that what it was written to, the newspaper? I know, I mean, weird, I'm just trying to say.
No, it is.
Seven?
Seven, grade level.
So.
Would a map be helpful at all?
That's a good point.
Well, yeah, but you're not putting this in the warrant, you don't put maps in the warrant. The warrant is just the language. What we do is we supplement it with a fact sheet. The town manager does a fact sheet, we do informational, you know, like, depending on the, 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 uh, the size of the project, I mean, like the public safety complex, we'll do, you know, FAQs and, you know, also has the stuff that I don't know if this rises to that level, but, you know, the solar array, we're doing video, you know, we're doing a video to Plan Twenty-Two, but I think we'll have a map in the, in the ordinance with the maps in the informational section. But when people go to the booth, they don't.
That's all they're gonna see, right.
They're not gonna read, you know, this is not gonna be in there, and neither's the maps, and so forth. Because then, I mean, sometimes you get seventy, you know?
Yeah.
You get seventy warrant articles, it would just, you know, thirty warrant articles, forty warrant articles, and they all have that, it just gets hectic.
Trust me, the, the public feels the same way you do. I've worked at the polling.
Yeah.
At one capacity or another for years, and people come up and ask me what this means, and I have to tell them I can't.
Right.
Because we're not allowed to talk to people who are within the polling area about anything, and so I can suggest what my mother used to do with me, a week before elections.
Read them.
She would, I would go to her house that Sunday, but the newsletter used to, right? And we would go through.
Right.
And talk about what it meant.
Yeah.
Right, so, I mean, I'm just saying, I, I understand the difficulty, I work in law and read legalese a lot, and it's still can be confusing for me, and I'm at this level of participation.
It's your language.
Well, it's not mine now, it's our ideas, but we don't, this board doesn't write the language.
No, I'm saying you are used to reading that language, most people aren't.
Right, and I have a hard time, is my point.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's a little confusing, so my point was, I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, just a chat.
The state level needs to.
Yeah.
But couldn't you have something like this on a tripod out in the atrium at the high school? the high school, that voters can look at as they come in?
I don't think so, I'd have to ask the moderator, I don't believe that's allowed either.
Okay.
You have to be so many feet away from, even the polling place, if I, as a citizen, wanted to hand stuff out, I could do it, but I have to be so far away.
Yeah, I understand that.
But, but that would include even the town as a whole.
Even the town providing permission.
I, that's my understanding, but I will check with the moderator, just to make sure my understanding is correct.
Well, anything would help people visualize things legally, we ought to do, you know, so you can, at least somebody can say, oh, yeah, go ahead and say that.
I mean, that's something where, I think Nancy brings up a really good point, of how to get people in front of what they're gonna be voting on sooner, and, I mean, technology can easily be leveraged that way, through the website, I'm not sure what gets done now.
Exeter TV, we're working on better ways of communicating.
Right, because, I mean, if people, I mean, if people are apathetic, and they're not gonna spend any time on it until they get to the voting booth, clearly there's not much we can do, right?
Right.
But if they want to know what they're voting on, and they want to be involved, then give them as much opportunity to understand what they're voting.
And my mind is working on next year, sorry, but it is, on what we talked about with Dave's plan on going through the zoning ordinances, right, that Exeter TV could then maybe parse out some of our conversations and answers and questions, and do something with that, because Bob Glouak, he is very creative that way.
Yeah, great.
But, so, sorry, that's like, for next year. Dave, can you remind me, deliberative session, I go to everyone, can I remember the answer to my own question? When we are at deliberative session, zoning amendments cannot be amended, but are they discussed?
No.
Yes, no, they can be discussed, it's just every year that, well, there's a new moderator now, usually they bump them, because they're writing the first, but they're like, well, we'll, we'll put them at the end, because there's zoning amendments, and they can't be changed.
Ah.
But they can be discussed, and some years they have been discussed, usually they're not.
Okay, I'll bring this up at this select board meeting on Monday night to see, and maybe somebody could talk to Kate about maybe a plan on, because it would be in the informational packet that will be available for the deliberative session, right, they do that, what do you, you already called it something earlier, the explanation sheets, those aren't done yet.
Frequently asked questions.
Well, the fact sheet.
The fact sheets, they do it for every amendment or warrant article, and so, we'll, we'll have this conversation some more at this select board level, to see what else we might be able to come up with to get that information out there.
Yeah, I think it's helpful.
So, to that end, I tried, like, looking at this, I agree with that, are you in, just real, can you, you mind if I?
No.
Okay, the first sentence is, are you in favor of the adoption of amendment as proposed by the planning board for the town zoning ordinance to amend Article 9.4 floodplain development ordinance, period? That's, that's gonna stand, that's the, that's the common line.
That'll understand.
So, I would say the intent of this amendment is to prevent new or expansion of existing septic systems within the special flood hazard area, I think it's important to mention that special flood hazard area within it.
Yep.
And, and then, I could say, exceptions are made for cases of system failure.
That's important.
Done, don't, don't, or malfunction, that doesn't matter, okay? Get rid of that.
Yep.
And then say, require all new construction within the regulated floodplain be elevated at least two feet above base flood elevation.
One second. This is the way my little crazy mind works, we've got an insight into Jen, she needs a schedule, I need numbers or bullets, so, could you do?
One, two.
Yeah.
The intent of this amendment is threefold, number one.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's gonna work, we can check, but I don't, I've never seen a warrant article with bullet points or numbers.
Not bullet points, but just inside the sentence, instead of having comma, comma, a number, you know what I mean, like, one comma, one...
So, I'm just, I think, yeah, okay, so two, if, if we go there, right?
Because you've got, well, you've got, this is, you know, they're somewhat complete thoughts, in a way, if you know what I mean, there are different aspects of what we're, what the intent is, because it's multi-faceted intent, but each sentence, or each line or two within a comma, is sort of a iteration of what it's doing, right, it's an intricacy, a facet.
So, yeah, let me just, if I, I got you, let me just finish reading it, what I, because I took away a lot after this. Okay, I'll start it, require all new construction, require all new construction within the regulated floodplain, added that, be elevated at least two feet above the base flood elevation, incorporate an advisory sea level rise S L R risk areas, and to include minor text modifications, period.
Can you say that one more time, please? I lost you trying to write in.
Yeah, so, I, I guess, I'll try, go on the start, at the fourth, the fourth sentence up from the bottom, right, where it says elevation, okay? Incorporate an advisory sea level rise S L R risk areas. Boom, put a comma after areas.
Yeah.
And strike everything, all the way until and, and almost the end of the second, and lastly, you know, you see, just, just leave and, get rid of at, lastly, and then, and to include minor text modifications, keep that, and then scratch the rest.
Thank you, because I was struggling over where the commas was...
So, it would read, the intent of this amendment is to prevent newer expansion of existing systems within the flood hazard area, exceptions are made for cases of system failures, require all new construction within the regulated floodplain to be elevated at least two feet above the base flood elevation, incorporate an advisory sea level rise risk area, and include minor text modification, and to include minor text modifications. Is that simpler?
It's a lot simpler.
Yep, I mean, because...
It's a lot simpler.
I mean, if people really, it gets the point across.
It does.
But if people want to dive in, they can dive in.
Right.
And, and it's all right.
I think, when I, I know, I mean, I vote, I read it, I do fine with it, but when you're looking at something for the first time, I'm also, I'm also involved, and I don't know how many citizens truly are involved, right? So, the first time you look at something, less is more, less words is more effective and convenient, you know?
I don't disagree, I agree.
If they walk out of there with a question, because you didn't make a, I mean, you could write a book on it, Dave, we spent months working on this crap, you know what I mean?
Are you, yeah, I know, it's a good question.
What is?
That helps a lot.
The first sentence is a question, but there's no question mark, is that normally how they're written?
Oh.
After ordinance on the third line. Now we're getting into, we're getting grammar, the more you look at it, it's like...
And this will get, this will get chewed up, too, like, in that sense, there will probably be a question mark, because we pass it on as draft, too, so...
Yeah.
But I just put a question mark, it should have a question mark, I believe, because you're asking a question.
Yeah, I would think so.
So, we good with that?
So, Dave, do we need to vote to, to forward this to the...
Yeah, if, if you're, yeah, if you're prepared, I got the, I gave you my memo on the backside of my memo, you flip over my memo.
Yes, you did.
And it says floodplain development ordinance motion.
Oh, there it is, right there.
Do you want a motion?
Yes, I'd like a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board placed the proposed amendment regarding Article 9.4 floodplain development ordinance, with the revised revision date of December thirtieth to two thousand twenty-three, on the two thousand twenty-three town warrant, with a recommendation for adoption.
Second, please.
Second.
Nancy, thank you. Any other discussion? Let's do roll call vote, Nancy, starting with you, please?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Yeah, Ms. Foal? Where's my gavel? There it is.
Wow, you had a little anger in that one. Didn't want to shovel anymore, is that what that?
Right. Any more master plan discussion? Oh, we've already done it, we've done it. Oh, no one else has got it now.
I think we're good.
You going for some fun?
I think we're, I mean, I don't know if anyone's gonna make that motion.
We just don't take action.
We've decided not to.
Okay.
No, no, yeah.
No, it's not ready.
Yeah, it's not ready. If you agree with me, you don't have to take any action, you only have to take action if you want to put something on there.
Okay.
So...
There's a lot I'd like to put on there, but I was afraid.
Any master plan discussion?
John, you got any master plan discussion?
No, we don't.
We don't?
I don't. We'll have some by next, next Friday, we'll make some, make some news.
John just handed me the agenda for the all-boards meeting, do you want me to?
No, I just, is that something all-boards are supposed to go to?
Yes.
I've never seen one of those before.
Oh, we haven't had one in quite a while, they used to have...
It's been a couple, three years.
It's been several, I think, yes.
So you show up if you want to go to it, and...
It's, it's highly, we're hopeful that people show up.
I just stumbled, I was on the website, and I saw that, and I didn't, I don't ever heard of this.
Oh, you got the email, right?
Well, maybe, maybe we did get, maybe it was an email, I was printing stuff out, and I...
It's mostly for chairs and/or vice chairs, but anyone can come, especially...
It didn't come from the planning board, it came from the other...
Yeah, the select board's putting it on, it came from Pam.
Oh, okay, I can't remember, but I did...
All-boards.
All-boards meetings.
Have you been to that?
To try to have open communication between boards, and one of the things is, like, an agenda, make sure everyone knows how, you know, to follow your agenda and wind up a motion.
Yeah, right.
Did you guys get that?
Last one, I was out.
I didn't get that, I'm looking at my...
That was wild.
Well, it's possible she only sent it to...
That was seven or eight years.
Well, I was on it from fourteen...
This is, this is a little different than that, though.
It is.
All-boards used, that was more of a work session.
No, it was land use ones.
Yeah, yeah.
This is all-boards.
Oh, see, that's different, yeah.
Everybody.
Committee submissions, everybody.
Yeah, so sorry, I didn't realize that there was a...
I don't know if I like a non-exclusive meeting, but I don't know.